Stand for the point of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
MHS student advisory update.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. We might just take one minute. We're having a little bit of a technical difficulty in having the students access the sound on the teams meeting. So we may have to have a couple of them call in so that way we can get audio for them to be able to give their report. If it pleases the committee, may I move into my report so that way we can let them log in and get sound ready?
Go for it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. First, I'd like to start with the winter COVID data. The current active and positive cases, I did update you on the 7th. And at that time, we had 33 total cases in the schools. I want to update you, we now have 57 total cases today on the 12th. There are 18 at MHS, 11 at Whitcomb, four at Jarek, five at Richard, eight at Good Now, eight at Kane, and three at the preschool. Not every case equals a quarantine because many of those students are remote. So, but I wanted to update you with the latest numbers that I have. Since reporting the coronavirus cases in the information to you, there has been an uptick, not in the total number of cases, but in the testing positivity rate. That did increase from the 8.29 to 9.7. And the total number of cases from the time I reported to you on the 6th, from that report of 342, the total cases in the city is now 345. The trends of cases is relatively the same. The majority of cases in the city continue to be from the age ranges of 5 through 39. And at the time that we had produced this report, we had quarantined three classrooms since returning from the break. We are currently at 10 classrooms that have been quarantined since return from the break. As a comparison, in the same week that we had after Thanksgiving, so that would have been the week of December 11th, with the 11th being the Friday, we had 19 classes quarantined with the same student population being in school. So we haven't have as many classes quarantined, but it is Tuesday. That was a Friday. I would expect over the next couple of days that there will be some additional classes that are quarantined. So that is the update for the COVID data as of today. On the FY '21 school year calendar, I did want to attach to the report a graphic of the school year calendar so you could look at it. That gives us basically an even number of days between the B and the A cohorts for the rest of the year. And that, obviously, no school on the 18th, recognizing Martin Luther King Jr. Day. And then it's pretty much even throughout the rest of the year with our final day of school being on June 18th. Wanted to update the committee on the application from the New England Innovation Academy. I would like your approval to ask them to come to our next meeting. I'll put this on the agenda if the committee is okay with that and they are okay with them coming to do a presentation. And I think they've done a lot of diligence on their application. They've sent some materials after the fact to let us know where they stand as they continue to get either permits or other pieces of information relative to their opening. And just for the public, in my last report, I may not have been very clear, but the New England Innovation Academy is a private school and that they are asking for approval to open a new school program in the city of Marlboro. And any private school that is asking for to open a program does come in front of the school committee for that approval, which is state law. Recognition of students. I did want you to see this. Attached to the report, you'll find a press release from Mr. Rosenthal recognizing six students who represent Marlboro Public Schools during a virtual master class. Congratulations Eli Plummer, Samantha Gamber, Aiden Grockie, Tara Pierre, Jackson Clemens, and Hannah Gluck. We're proud of your accomplishments. We're also proud to announce that two of our MHS students have had their art selected for the highly competitive Emerging Young Artists 2021 juried exhibition hosted by the College of Visual and Performing Arts at the University of Massachusetts Dartmouth. The exhibition is online this year and it will be featured on the college website from January 22nd through February 6th, 2021. Congratulations to Jonathan Merganza and Adam Hussein. Images of their artwork were attached to this report. Congratulations to both of our students. FY '22 budget. Tonight, Mr. Diaz is going to ask for an extension of our budget process. I wanted to share some thoughts and my perspective on our upcoming budget process. The economic impacts of COVID-19 have not yet reached local governments as they have already affected private industry. Stimulus funds buoyed our ability to purchase one-time materials, fund one-time positions, and remain steady for this fiscal year. I credit the steady hand of the mayor, city council, and school committee for allowing us to maintain our services in response to the pandemic. It's likely that the latest round of stimulus directed at education will be faced with difficult decisions on how to best utilize one-time funding. My plea to you is from past experience. Both in the early 2000s and in 2008 recession, one-time funding was offered to districts as a replacement for lost Chapter 70 funds and it creates stabilizing effects for those who could not raise additional funds from their cities or towns. Commonwealth recently used one-third of their rainy day funds to balance the 2021 budget with the possibility to use more for the 2022 budget. Using one-time funds to support operational expenses will leave the district in a negative position in the future, having to raise local funds to offset the stimulus. Maintaining a steady hand and a steady future with stable finances requires tough decisions. Next year's budget will be conservative, focused on the fiscal reality we're about to live in for the next few years. Total tax revenues collected by the state in FY '22 may slightly exceed FY '19 collections. The city will also be facing lost revenues. School budgeting as a yearly endeavor can create stress, emotion, and create adversarial camps fighting for resources for their preferred programs and models. I'd like to break this cycle and present to you the mayor and the city council a multi-year plan for the Marlboro Public Schools. I want our faculty and staff to be able to see how the strategy for improvement can actually be accomplished. We need a multi-year plan that recognizes the fiscal reality but also predicts the district's needs moving forward and creates a plan to be able to fund them. And Mr. Diaz, have the students been able to log in with phones so that way they can be heard?
I have at least three students on the phone right now, which is great.
Mr. Mayor, if it pleases the committee, can we suspend my report and go to the students?
Go right ahead.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Riley, thank you for being here tonight and thank you to our students from the Student Advisory Committee. Just going in order that they're on paper, first, if we could hear from Hattie Parker.
Hattie, if you're on the phone, you may have to press a star 6 to unmute yourself.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. My name is Hattie Parker. And today I'm going to be doing a follow-up on the junior on-class college planning process. Firstly, I would like to thank the Guidance Department and the rest of the staff at Marlboro High School for all the hard work and dedication they put into educating the students. We know that as a junior class, we greatly appreciate it. First, last time, I raised the concern of communication between the Guidance Department and the junior class about the college planning process. And since that meeting, I can definitely say that communication has improved. Since then, the Guidance Department has put out a month-by-month guideline as what students can do to stay on top of the college planning process. And they also have their annual college parent information night, which was super informative. I also personally reached out to the MHS Guidance Department and they assured me that students are not being significantly affected when it comes to college planning, the college planning process due to COVID and not being able to physically be in school. I created and sent out a student survey so that I could get the students, the student perspective on how they feel about the college planning process. And of the students that did respond to the survey, 100% of the students felt comfortable emailing their guidance counselors, which is super huge because that's the main form of communication this year. And when it came to other aspects of college planning process, like test prep, certain resources, extracurriculars, and just being aware of what to expect, it seemed that students were comfortable and were prepared for the college training process. I think a lot of my concerns that I raised in the last meeting were effectively answered. And I can say that students' concerns are also definitely answered.
Thank you. Sorry. Thank you so much, Hattie, for your report. Next up, we're going to hear from Abby Hennessy. If you could also unmute your mic.
Over the past couple of days, I've been gaining insights from students and teachers and using my own personal experiences relative to how the music program is going and how they're adapting to everything during this pandemic. And overall, I've heard nothing but excitement and joy about being able to do anything music-related. I have heard and seen examples where all the music teachers are working hard and being able to adapt to everything. We are, we are, we are all still learning each day and every day. And they're doing a great job to keep us focused and growing. I spoke with some students against perspective about how music has been going this year, and this is what I heard. Pedro Berzetti, a senior, said, although music isn't the same as it used to be, he still enjoys having it in some form. The teachers really put in so much effort and it means a lot. I've been writing a lot of music during this whole situation and even, even have thought about releasing some songs. So it's just kind of a new start to a new year and a lifestyle. Cayman Pacific, a senior, said, Voices Required is going good. We have meetings on Wednesdays and we've been working hard on making music together. It is hard not to be able to sing together, but in the end, we will still want to make music and we're pushing through. Jess Rosenzweig, a sophomore, said, the beginning of the class is like general music with all ensembles and different things about music. It was shaping you into a better player and a musician, which is cool. All the teachers are so passionate and are all working very hard. We did some different projects and I can tell that they're putting in a lot of effort. We are now starting to play our instruments again, like playing scales and recording ourselves. We also started playing pieces of music again, which has been a lot of fun. Overall, the class is like a combination of general music and ensemble. Everyone is trying their best and making it a lot of fun. Eli Plummer, a senior, said, I personally love music classes. Of course, it's something different and cannot match ensembles and performances. But now we are learning about how music affects different things in our lives and how it helps people. I'm personally really enjoying all of it and the teachers are doing a great job with everything. Obviously, it is not ideal, but you can tell that all the teachers are putting in a lot of effort. Bethany Gibson, a sophomore, said, I'm very happy that Voices Required is running still and that I still have that connection. Although I'm not taking music right now, I'm looking forward to it next semester. I'm glad that they are trying to pull stuff together because without it, I feel a little lost not knowing that I'll be able to make music with my friends. It's an escape for me and I can't wait to get back. As you can tell, all the students are adjusting well and so are the teachers. Everyone is adapting. These are creating more music options each day. Some groups have been able to come together out of the normal class schedules, such as jazz, is open to anyone that wants to start learning. Jazz, Voices Required, and another creative outlet that is being created for strings will all be options for other music activities to do outside of the normal day. This year has certainly been a lot about adjusting to the new things going on and the new music program has pulled it off very well. In a new class they created this year called Extreme Music Makeover, they have done many different things, including playing music, learning new charts, breaking down the details of playing music, and learning the mental and emotional side of music, which helps and inspires so many people. They've had six special guests, including two Grammy Award nominees. Most of the guest speakers talked about their experiences and their different backgrounds of music. With this new class, they have really emphasized that music is more than just performing. And at a time like this, when you can't have any performances, it has shown all the students that there is more to music than purely just playing or singing for people. They've also brought new sophomore into the classes like Notebite, Soundcheck, and BandLab. These are all alternatives to physically playing or singing in class while you still get the music experience out of it. The class involvement is pretty even from each grade, too. The class is made up of 23.4% of 9th grade, 29.9% of 10th grade, 27.3% of 11th grade, and 19.5% of 12th grade. Also, in a recent Google survey, they have given the current, to the current music students, 77.9% of the class would recommend it to a friend as they were all enjoying it. From all this insight, I hope you can tell that everyone is working hard to create a great environment to support music for staff and students. And the kids are loving to be able to get back into music and their passion. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Abby. Next up, we're going to have Jessica. Jessica, if you could unmute your mic, please.
Hello. My name is Jessica Rosenzweig and I am a sophomore at MHS. For this January school board meeting, I chose to talk about how the mental health of students has been affected by the pandemic. And I'll share the experience of what it is like to be a remote student in school at this time. Personally, I know that not being in school has definitely had a negative impact on my overall mental health as well as my academics. In a normal school year, I have always felt like I have had the consistent motivation to get my schoolwork done and strive to do my best. And while I still strive to do my best, I have struggled a lot to find the motivation to bring myself to do anything, be it schoolwork or even get out of bed. This has definitely resulted in my academic performance to be less than what it usually would have been, which is really stressful and difficult to come to terms with. Additionally, without the structure that school typically provides, I've also struggled to remain successful. For me, school has felt much harder than what it has ever been, particularly because of the isolation that accompanies remote learning, even if the schoolwork itself is not as difficult. As well as this, I made sure to reach out to a variety of students from different grades. While some have shared a similar experience as mine, other students mentioned that the time being home has helped them focus on themselves better and improve their mental health. One of my peers in the sophomore class stated, "My mental health has gone better actually since I've had more time to focus and work on myself." However, others shared that being home all the time is difficult for them because it presents more distractions. Another one of my peers in the sophomore class said, "Being at home makes my mental health much worse because my family has a pretty bad diamond, dynamic." One freshman I talked to said, "It's very hard to stay motivated most of the time. I think being home has just made me lose most of my motivation and my grades are kind of being affected by it." The idea, this idea was repeated by a senior I spoke with who shared that although having the comfort of being at home is nice, having to keep up with school every day while you're surrounded by so many distractions has been proven to be super vexing. School in general is always stressful, but especially so this year. Since there's no real separation between school and home anymore, I feel like I never have a chance to really relax anymore. The blend between home and school has also played a role in my ability to get my work done in time, especially since teachers are being more lenient in understanding with deadlines and makes it harder for me to stay on top of all my work. I think the biggest points I have taken away from talking to many of my peers is that motivation is definitely a huge struggle and that being isolated at home has affected students' mental health in a variety of ways. This poses an added challenge on top of responding. Compared to being in school, it's just unrealistic. I would also like to acknowledge all the efforts Marlboro High School has been doing to try to help better support the students during this time. I'm very appreciative of the fact that teachers have been actively trying to avoid overburdening students by not giving homework. Additionally, as students navigate the new challenges brought by remote learning and COVID-19 in general, I'm grateful for the leniency that teachers are providing during this time. I am also aware there is a subcommittee that is part of the student council that is working on spreading awareness about mental health and trying to put together a resource. While nothing is yet, has also put together multiple resources students can access to help them through this challenging time. There is also a website that focuses on social emotional learning that Ms. Ellison, one of MHS's school psychologists, put together that can be found through the MHS homepage. It's helpful that guidance counselors set up office hours and have been there for students throughout the semester. I know that the Guidance Department is trying really hard to support the students of MHS during this time, and I'm really grateful for that effort. I think a lot, I think a lot of initiative has already been taken and I appreciate that the school is providing so many resources for students to utilize. The only thing that could be done better in the next coming weeks is to make students more aware of all the opportunities because I think a lot of students don't know how many resources they have and their guidance counselors are here for them. I want to thank you all for taking the time to hear students' perspectives during times so challenging for all of us. Listening to and communicating with one another is the only way to solve issues as drastic as mental health and I'm looking forward to seeing how MPS moves forward with their efforts to improve mental health in the coming term. Thank you and good evening.
Thank you, Jessica. And next, we're going to hear from Risha.
Hi, good evening. So today I'll be following up on what I spoke about last meeting. And last time I talked about how hard it's been for freshmen to adjust and get involved. Ms. Murphy compared my presentation and she started to plan a virtual club fair. She mentioned that in the previous years, there's been something similar in person, so that was the basis of the idea. She reached out to the advisors of different clubs to see if they were interested in participating and if they were looking for new members. All of the information was put together and they were posted into the Google classrooms for each grade. All of this information was also shared to students on social media and teachers mentioned it in classes, too. We got less participation than anticipated, but it was helpful to get those resources out to students who wouldn't have known about it otherwise. I talked to some students who I saw participating in the club fair and got some responses. A question I asked was whether they would have known about these extracurriculars if it hadn't been for the club fair, and some said yes and some said no. For those who said yes, they had mentioned that they knew about the clubs but weren't sure how to become a member or didn't know what the club was about, so they never took the initiative. They said that being able to join a meeting for the club that they were interested in was nice because they were able to see what it was like without no, without commitment. The students I talked to said that they'll be committing to these clubs now that they've joined and been a part of one of the meetings and they're looking forward to be a part of it. Those who said no talked about not knowing that the school had so much to offer and that they didn't know where to find the resources and that this club fair was a good idea because they now get to be part of these clubs that they're excited about. So although we got less participation, I feel like this resource we got out did help students who are interested in getting involved find something they want to be a part of. And for the students who didn't participate, they still have all of this information available to them and that information is easy to access. Overall, I think this club fair was quite a success for the students who participated despite the turnout. Ms. Murphy did a great job planning this and those students are now able to be involved and meet new people, which is what the freshmen needed, as stated last time. And that's about it. Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you very much. And to Allison, I just want to apologize because at the last meeting, you were not included on the invite list and you were unable to join that meeting in a timely fashion, so I wanted to apologize for that. So you were unable to participate in that meeting. But it looks like we've got it rectified. I can see you on the screen. So I'm not sure if there was anything from the last meeting that you were unavailable or unaware, couldn't share it. I wanted to make sure that you had an opportunity as well.
Yes, thank you. I did a poll of the student body. I opened it up to all grades. I got a little over 100 good responses. And I just asked what model of learning everyone thinks we should start doing again. And the majority said remote learning. It was about 60% said they want to stay in remote learning. But I was going to suggest that you have a way that people could choose either way or you had to switch all your classes and some classes weren't available if you stayed remote. So I'm glad that you guys were able to find a way so that you can choose either way. It's a lot easier to stay remote.
Allison, can I ask you to hold up just a minute? Should we have Allison call in also because obvious, is it just me that's having trouble with the voice?
It's a little bit delayed, Allison. Would you be able to call in on the phone just so we can hear you a little bit clearer? Is that, is that okay?
I definitely want to hear your comments and I'll hear and...
Thank you, Allison. Mr. Diaz, can you put the phone number in the chat so she has it? Thank you.
Allison, I'll copy that over again.
Here we go.
That was quick. It's star 6 to unmute on the phone, Allison.
It's a star 6 to unmute Allison on the phone.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you, Allison. You might want to just mute your computer mic so it doesn't come through twice, okay?
Yeah, okay. Should I start over?
Yes, please. Yes, please. Thank you, Allison.
So I did a poll of the student body asking what model of learning people think we should transition to. And 60% said they wanted to go to remote learning. Oh, I got a, I got 110 responses and I opened it up to all grades. So 60% said remote learning. And it was mostly for, it was mostly safety concerns. And some people are really used to a routine, but I was going to suggest that you make it easier for people to kind of choose either way because I know before if you wanted to stay remote, you had to switch around your classes and some classes weren't available at all. So I'm glad that you guys found a way to fix that because now it's a lot easier for people to kind of choose whatever fits best for them. I think, though, that even if we have some people in school, we should encourage people to stay home if they can just because cases are really high right now and it's not getting better. And there are a lot of students who have the ability to be home. Like myself, I decided to stay remote because I know that I am doing well at home and I, like some kids have to be in school, but I'm not one of those kids, so that's why I decided to stay remote. So I think if we can encourage kids to do that, if they can, just so we have the least number of people in school at one time. And some other concerns were from seniors. People want to know when our last day of school is and people want to make sure that we have a plan so that we actually have a graduation ceremony. And I think that's pretty much it.
Thank you, Allison. And I know Mr. Riley and I have both communicated with the state about the question of the last day of school. The regulation that Desi has put forward has always been on 180-day schedule. And now that the commissioner has taken 10 days off of that schedule, they have not yet revised the guidance on the last day of school. So that's an open question that we've asked. And I will say that I think last year Marlboro did an excellent job in having an actual graduation ceremony. So we have a little bit of practice there if we have to make an alternative plan again. But thank you so much. And I, again, just apologize for last time where you weren't able to pop into that meeting, Allison. But thank you so much. And I, again, just apologize for last time where you weren't able to pop into that meeting, Allison.
Are there any questions for any of the student advisors? Or Allison? Any question? Allison, I do have a question. Not your opinion, but if you were taking this poll, and I'm going to ask Mrs. Hennessy not to chime in. If you were taking this poll and said, "There's no sports unless we're in school", what would have happened? How do you think that would have changed it? Now, I'm not saying for you to vote, but how do you think it would have changed the poll? People put me on the spot all the time, so I'm glad I'm returning the favor. No, I want you to be honest. I really want you to be honest.
If I'm being completely honest, I think a lot more people would have chosen to go back to school just because I know sports is really important to people. And I know that they don't want going back to school to affect sports in any way. And I think it's important that we make sure that it doesn't because we didn't get a whole fall season and a lot of other schools did. And I think that's something that's attainable and we should really focus on making sure we can have sports.
Now, thank you very much for the honesty. I, I think the 50% is not a surprise to, you know, anyone. I think we've seen that since the beginning of the year. And that's probably the hardest part of making the decision is because it is 50-50. And also keep it in mind that it's only the high school that has sports. So everyone else on the high school doesn't have that opportunity to interact with the other students. But thank you very, very much for that. Any other questions? See you none.
Thank you to the students. Thank you, Mr. Riley. If it pleases the committee, I'd suspended my report. I don't know if you would like to go back to that.
Yep.
I had no other items on my report, Mr. Mayor. Sorry, I should have said, "Do you want to go back to discussion and/or questions?"
Okay, Assistant Superintendent of Teacher and Learning. You have questions?
I do.
All right, Mrs. Matthews has questions.
Thank you. Regarding the budget process, I assume, Mr. Verjon, that you have spoken to the mayor regarding the dates, which I know Mr. Diaz has later in the report, but just of doing a forecasting over time versus... I mean, I think it's a very realistic thing to do because we have contracts that lead us to multiple-year decisions anyhow. So you can map out what is already planned. It's the peripherals and then obviously budget that make it harder to... You know, you've got your wish list and then you have your reality.
Yep. I have not yet asked the mayor. The mayor's finding out the same time everyone else is. We're asking for one-month extension to our normal process due to the variables. So he, the mayor is finding out the same time that everyone else got their report.
Budget is going down to the council when the budget goes down to the council, whether we're done or not. And like I've said before, 2021, we should be able to get by with the additional support we've had. 2022 is a different story. I think it's going to be, it's, I think it's a good goal to set some long-range planning, but I think 2022 is going to be very interesting because the state can't continue to dish out the money they've been dishing out. I mean, they just can't. So the, and they have to balance the budget as we do. Unlike Washington, it just keeps improving stuff. The state has to balance it just like we do. So, and their rainy day fund is, you know, they've taken some funds out of there. The revenues this year are coming in okay, so we're hopeful. I listened to the forecast with the legislature a month or so ago. It was amazing how these experts that are doing the forecasting were all over the park on what's going to happen over the next, this year and next year. They were, they were all over the place and very respected people coming up with these estimates. So, you know, it's just that our budget will be completed as it was last year on time and we're going to lead the state on it like we did before. And we're going to figure out what we need to get by. Luckily, the superintendent, I had worked with him and Doug on utilizing the first round of PPP money, CARESAC money, there's so many things out there, but CARESAC money, we pushed all that onto the city side for the first round because the timeline, the schools had more time to spend their money. Then we get into, let's figure out how we can utilize it best for the community. And then with hours left to go, Congress decided to extend the allowance for us to spend it into next year, for the whole of calendar year next year. So that's, email went out, said, "Everyone start spending immediately. We're pulling back everything we can. I need it for the next 12 months." So it's, it's, it's going to be a challenging year. But, you know, we already picked up a big chunk of the schools by pushing it on to the, on the city side. Superintendent came in and turned back substantial amount this year, so that was helpful. And I anticipate we'll be doing something like that this year. So we'll, we'll see how the year goes, but I'm going to work with him and make sure we get it done on a timely basis.
We think we can meet that.
Respectfully so. I just want to actually acknowledge, I think we've been very fortunate here in Marlboro where I think the relationship that's really been formed by your office, the city council and with the superintendent and business administration, you all and, and school committee, we've all worked together to get through multiple interesting dynamics over many years. And I think part of that is really due to a lot of trust that's been built over years and open forms of communication on trying to work through the process. So I'm appreciative of being brought the insight of looking for the additional time. I think even the discussions I had with Mr. Diaz about transfer, some of the transfers that are on tonight, you know, up for discussion and voting. It helps to have those discussions openly and understand and making sure that we're on the same page. So thank you for all that you've done and, and the city council and, and for you all with your communication because I think that's where we will all face it together. And that's the big thing is trying to get through it, knowing that. So, thank you.
It just, I said that dozens and dozens and dozens of times over the last nine, 10 months. It's just everyone's on the same page in the city moving forward to get through it. And we see the light at the end of the tunnel and the cave is falling in as we're running toward the light. So we're close. We're close. So, you know, we just got to hang in there a little longer and hopefully we're all celebrating by 4th of July, so. Other questions from the committee? Hennessy.
So are we going to touch upon the discussion about the return to school at this point? Or is that a discussion that we are looking to have later in the meeting?
I would prefer to have it at the end if that's...
That's completely fine. I just wanted clarity so that we weren't looking as to when because it's not like it's on the agenda specifically. So, thank you.
Any other questions? Dan.
I have some, just going back to the data from the COVID stuff. Is it possible that you could actually do what you did today from now on? Which is basically, you do update us what's more recent from what you sent us, obviously. But when you do give us the report of the number of cases, could you tell us, again, which, how much, what that means in terms of quarantine of classes?
Absolutely.
Update. I know, I know you tell us as it happens, but that way we'll have a better idea going into that. Also, when classes are, I'm sorry about that. When classes are quarantined, like at a lower level, has that ever worked its way up the system to the familial contacts?
I'm not sure about the question.
In other words, I'm a third grader and I've got, and someone in my class is sick. My class goes out of quarantine. I have a brother or a sister who's going to the middle school. Let's say they're in a special needs class or something. Does that special needs class then have to worry about being quarantined as well? Because that child's had contact with someone?
So as long as that other, the other student in the other school is not positive, it's not a quarantine. But if they're close contact, they should also be out of school?
But would that be the entire class if that was the case or just that one student?
No, no, not unless the child becomes positive. So if we find out that they've been positive and within the timeframe that we have in our protocols, then we would quarantine the other class. We have had a couple instances, you know, the past couple of months where you would have three, three or four kids from one family. One or two of them become positive at around the same time and they both knock out classes in the same school. That's, that's happened a couple times now.
Has any class been quarantined more than once?
Yes, but we've had one class quarantined three times at the Good Now School.
Also, when, again, this is just questions that came to me as I was thinking about how we're controlling the numbers. Obviously, these kids go on, some of them go on school buses. How do you look into that when you're talking about contact?
So one of the things that Mr. Diaz will do when we find out that there's been a positive student, if they do ride the bus, we do kind of investigate the bus situation and we rely upon a couple of things. One is the firsthand reports of the driver to, because one of the things we've been doing is with the way that we've been doing busing, with everyone pretty much getting their own seat and having the windows down, it's a, it's a safe way to get kids to school. The one thing that we're always asking is, was there a, was there something that happened that was outside of the protocols? Were kids horsing around? Were kids taking off their masks? Was something going on that didn't really look like it, you know, it should have been doing? And in that case, we would potentially make a different decision. We haven't had that happen this year. Everything, and even the cases where we're, where we found that there might have been a kid moving a seat here and there, Mr. Diaz can look at the actual tape of the bus and then try to make a determination and say, "Okay, they were in their seat for almost a whole ride and they were only on the bus for three to five minutes." So that, that's how we can make those, those decisions.
Yeah, just so that I, I know and the public knows that we are checking our contacts, whichever direction we have to go in. That's what I was curious about. Thank you, Ms. Mayor.
Any other questions? See you none. Assistant Superintendent of Teaching and Learning.
Thank you. So I'm back again with my monthly update on MCAS and accountability. I was hoping to have more information on the elementary, the three through eight today. They promised it at the beginning of this week, but I do not. So on January 5th, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education notified districts of the following changes. So this is our monthly update. First of all, the CD modification for the class of 2021. Later on this month, the commissioner will recommend to the Board of Elementary and Secondary Education that the competency determination, which we all call the CD, requirement be modified in English, Language Arts, and Mathematics for students in the class of 2021 who have not yet earned their CD. So who have not yet earned past MCAS. The recommended modification would allow students to receive their CD by passing an approved course and demonstrating competency in the subject in lieu of a qualifying MCAS score. So this will allow our seniors to get their diploma if they've taken courses and we certify those. The MCAS testing time for grades three through eight will be shortened. This is the information we have as of today. The department will reduce testing time for students in grades three through eight. The department has stated that they will use, and I included it in quotes, "A session sampling approach" in which each student will take only a portion of each MCAS assessment in each subject. The department hopes this modified MCAS administration will provide meaningful diagnostic data at the individual student level. This is alerting us to the shift that they, for this year, are moving away from accountability to having another data point for our students. We always love data for our students, so if it truly is just a sampling, then good data is something we will be able to use. And then finally, accountability relief, which has not been anything we've discussed at all. It hasn't been a concern for us. The commissioner will not name or recommend to the board any new underperforming or chronically underperforming districts or schools in the upcoming school year. And the department will also consider any available flexibilities provided by the U.S. Department of Education. So this is the first time they's putting it in writing that they will be requesting from the U.S. Department of Education. So that's a shift in notification. Are you okay on this?
Questions from the committee? Mrs. Bolandja.
Just, just a question of clarification. So with the sampling approach, I, I don't understand how the sampling is going to provide meaningful diagnostic data at the individual student level. I mean, I thought the whole purpose of the sampling was to do more of a composite to see as a whole how we're doing.
So recently, the Board of Education has been talking about using some of the data to identify students for intervention or potentially enrichment activities, especially over the summer. So I think that this is aligned with that idea of having data for students across a city or the state and then being able to identify populations that could participate in some statewide enrichment activities or intervention activities. It's, they had some pilot programs last summer.
But how is that different from the regular MCAS delivery system? I mean, I don't, I don't get it.
I thought, I always thought that MCAS should give us some feedback on our alignment to the curriculum, to the state standards. I think that they're shifting more to the individual and not the big district look.
Okay.
Scusa.
Well, I have, this, this kind of made me, I don't want to say laugh because nothing about the MCAS to me is funny or laughable. But one phrase I heard them use at one point was this, they were going to hold, hold harmless, which is what they used. I think it's hysterical. If you hold something harmless, that means at some point you've admitted something you're doing was harmful, which is something I've always thought the MCAS were. So it's kind of interesting that they would have used that phrase. I mean, it's just, it also says here that they're basically, if you read the last sentence of the modification, they're basically saying, "We'll let the school systems decide if their students are capable", which is the way we did it for how many hundreds of years before the MCAS came in. So we're back to what we were before. So now they've decided we're competent again to determine our own students' competency. The shortening of the, of the time, that's good for the students. I used to joke when I was teaching music that for 10 months out of the, no, nine months out of the year I taught music and one month I made noise because I was not allowed to do anything because I was a music teacher. So it's nice to see they shortened that down a bit. But the funny thing there again to me is if they thought, if they think they can do something by doing this now, why couldn't they have been doing something like this again all along? I mean, it makes no sense that now they, it's like they've seen the light, they've come to, I guess epiphany hit them on the sixth. I'm not sure what happened to them there. And the same thing with accountability relief at the bottom about the schools. We've always said, I, we, I should say teachers, you know, I was one of the teachers. And I know a lot of school committees have said this too, that this thing was always designed to be punitive way back when. And I think that's kind of a tacit admission that that's what this kind of was. If they're saying, "We're not going to make anybody, we're not going to call, we're not going to call anybody names this year", is what this is to me. I mean, I just looked at this thing and I said, "This is the points we've been making as teachers and as school people for the last, how many years has it been? Like 86 or something like that?" So it's just, it just seems like they're, they're kind of admitting to us what we've been telling them all along. But it's just a case of, I don't know, the cart and the horse coming back around full circle, I guess. But those are the three things that struck me when I saw this and I just, I just wanted to put them out there and, and see what I, see what I thought was sort of the strange turns of events at the education, Board of Education. So I'm done. Off my soapbox.
Hennessy.
Shocker that I want to say something. I won't shoot the messenger, but it's just, it's pretty laughable, their update of January, you know, 5th, which you can't say, but I can and I will. which you can't say, but I can, and I will. I just think they're not addressing the situation around remote learning. That has to be an option. They've not addressed any of that at all in any way, shape, or form. It's like they're trying to duck away from it. And that's not going to change, that there will be students that need to be remote. And you can't go put some of those students and force them into the schools to have to take your MCAS. So I just think it's humorous. Nothing I'm envisioning you all are going to change with that. I guess I'll write another new letter to Jeff, my friend, to let him know my thoughts. I just, you know, thank you for your information. Nothing to really say other than I just think it's like rolling with the punches that are becoming more and more humorous about how they're trying to approach keeping an eye on things when they really need to let the individuals at the schools at this point, worrying about what the schools are doing to deliver the education at this point. Trying to do the oversight at this point is kind of crazy, but thank you very much.
I do want us to take two wins that our seniors can graduate.
That's great.
So that is, that is absolutely positively great. And if we get a waiver on accountability, then we do not have to worry about our participation rate for our students that are remote. And so there's two wins there.
Yeah, thank you.
It's a victory.
So glad you saw the whole, the shiny.
Small victory, yes.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
So at this time, Supervisor of Humanities, I asked Supervisor of Humanities Jody Reyes to come to update the committee on the civics project requirement for our eighth graders and our high school students. So Jody is going to take it away.
Thank you, Ms. Murphy. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay. So thank you, Ms. Murphy, and thank you, School Committee members and mayor, for the opportunity to speak and give an update on the civic project requirement. So in a nutshell, the civic project requirement, which is a law that Governor Baker passed in 2018, is that all students in grade eight and all high school students should have access to a high-quality-aligned civics project. At the high school level, the school designates a grade level where this will occur. I also wanted to mention that, so it is, it is a school requirement, not a competency determination requirement. The projects also have a lot of flexibility in terms of the topic or the issues they will address, as well as flexibility in terms of the format. The law provides that these can be individual, small group, or whole-class projects. And even if the majority of students do small group or whole-class projects, the student, or any student, has the option of working on the project individually. So in 2018, Governor Baker signed Chapter 296 of the Acts of 2018. And here is an excerpt from the law. Each public school-serving students in the eighth grade and each public high school shall provide not less than one student-led, nonpartisan civics project for each. And these may be individual, small group, or class-wide. There are a number of other things built into the law. So the law states that they're student-led, nonpartisan, and they will be aligned to the 2018 History and Social Science Curriculum Framework. So in 2018, new frameworks were adopted. And one of the features of the new frameworks is that not only do they include content standards, but they also emphasize literacy and history and social science practices. And they also designate eighth grade as the year when all students throughout the state will take a course on civics. That being said, civics is intertwined throughout the whole framework. So it's not that students learn about civics in eighth grade and then it's totally not addressed. So the spirit of the framework is that civics are embedded in every grade from pre-K through high school at a developmentally appropriate mode. The law also talks about a civic, a Commonwealth Civics Challenge that will take place, so this is for eighth graders to showcase their civics projects. This will take place for the first time in 2223. And the state is going to release guidelines for that at some point. The law also requires the Secretary of State to promote youth membership on municipal boardrooms, committees, and commissions. And it also has a provision for a high school voter challenge. This is for students to register and register to vote at the high school level. And more guide, my understanding is that more guidance on that will be forthcoming. And this slide is the timeline for implementation in a nutshell. So in 2018, the new frameworks were adopted by the state. And then last year was the first full year of implementation of the framework. So at the, at the middle and at the high school level, we implemented the new frameworks. And we also started planning for implementing the civics projects. Based on the law, 2020 to '21, which is this school year, is the first year of implementing these projects. And then 2223 would be the Commonwealth Civics Challenge. And so in this slide, I won't go through all of the bullet points. I'll just highlight a few things. So based on the state, so you'll notice there are nine adjectives that describe what a high-quality civics project is. One of, so I'll highlight a few of them. One of them is student-led. So students are the ones who should determine the issues that they will put on. They're project-based and real-world, so they're not just purely, this is not just a purely academic exercise. It, a high-quality civics project is also inquiry-based. So the spirit of the project is that students don't go into the project knowing the, knowing the answer in advance. So the project is meant for students to engage in inquiry. So they ask questions, they will research a topic, apply media literacy skills, and ultimately, based on the research, they will discover potential solutions to a problem. A high-quality civics project also emphasizes, understand your system's impact. So students are expected to tackle the root causes of a problem. So for instance, one example that the state gives, so a food drive, for instance, does not meet the spirit of the, because it does not really address the root causes of hunger. These projects are meant to be goal-driven, and these goals are categorized into two: influencing policy and influencing public opinion. These are meant to be nonpartisan, process-focused, and action-based. The state also provides a six-step process for civic action, starting from examining the self and community, identifying a focus issue, researching the topic, developing an action plan, taking action, and then reflecting and showcasing. So what are we thinking of in grade eight and at the high school? So given that we are in the midst of a pandemic, so the law was passed before, before the pandemic, and so obviously, no one could have foreseen this. Having said that, the state understands that we're in a pandemic. There are different, there are multiple challenges for pulling this off. And so the scale of the projects is not expected to be what they otherwise would have been under normal circumstances. Also, given the challenges, what we've tried to do was try to look for opportunities within the existing curriculum where the civics project would organically flow from what was already part of the curriculum or being planned. So in eighth grade, for instance, we already have an investigative journalism unit that's already part of the ELA curriculum. And so that's going to actually take place in February. So for grade eight, the plan is for students to start, start the project, if you will, in their English classes this February. And once the, once the unit is over, then the social studies teachers will pick the baton. The high school, we're exploring two avenues. In grade nine, which is world history, there is a final research project plan. And so we're exploring how the civics project could dovetail into that. In grade 10, ELA, there is a plan for a social justice-themed research project at the end of the year. And so we are, we are looking to use that as another potential avenue for fulfilling the civics project requirement. In all cases, we are coordinating with the ELL and SPED Department to make sure that students who are not in regular ELA or social studies classes would have the opportunity to access this. Long-term, looking at the grade nine and 10 STEAM project, which was, which was implemented starting last year or the year before. This year, because the teaming at the high school had to be, we had to go that due to scheduling, due to scheduling, that's not part of the curriculum this year. But longer term, once we get back into teaming, we're looking at that as an alternative.
Questions from the committee? Any questions from the committee? I guess the only question I would have is, why wouldn't, it seems like everything's a blend here. We're blending it with, you know, world history, we're blending it with social studies, we're blending it with different classes. Why wouldn't we just have a civics course? It takes up, you know, local and state and federal government.
So there is a civics course now in eighth grade. And that is, that is a statewide, that's statewide based on the new frameworks. So we actually do have a civics course at the middle school level.
Superintendent, can you send me that curriculum? Because I'd love to see it.
Sure thing, Mr. Mayor. And I think the other thing that I would just want to say to the committee is, I think this also gives us a great opportunity to work in partnership with Mr. Carrigan from the City Clerk's office. And I've had many discussions with him. I understand this is a tough time right now. But I think that the City Clerk's office could be a real resource for the high school. And I'd love to see Mr. Carrigan working with our students. And I think that the best possible thing could see our students helping him out, whether it being poll workers or being involved with, you know, city business. I think it would be a great thing.
We've done it a couple of times where we.
Mr. Superintendent, if I may just add to that, the high school voter challenge, like, once that, once that comes online, we definitely will be coordinating with his office.
We've done several things over the years and it seems to stall along the way. But I know that Steve's been in the schools a couple of times over the last few years. Lisa Thomas was in the schools before him. Years ago, we used to have classes come down and shadow the city council for the night and learn about city government a little bit. And all the elected officials used to get into the schools, Ms. Weldon's class.
Yep.
And it was fantastic, because the kids really don't know. And I think sometimes some of the instructors were learning things as we went along also. And, you know, my, my big thing is, and you've said it a couple of times, is to keep it nonpartisan and let them learn about government a little bit. Because very, very few know about the city government or the state, or the federal government. So there's really nothing out there. But I haven't seen too many come through City Hall saying, tell us about city government. We're actually going to put on a program, hopefully in April or May, where it's going to be Government 101. And it was actually something that goes on at someplace down in Indiana, Fishes, Indiana or something. We have, someone moved down there and sent it up to me and said, you know, they do this down there where they put on a program.
I wonder who that was.
And it's, I believe it's six to eight weeks. And you bring in different department heads to explain what they do in government. So thank you, Maureen Gruelick. And we plan on, we plan on kicking that off this year, even virtually, so.
That's great.
I think this could be a good thing. Hopefully, we don't pollute it. Mrs. Tennessee.
I think, you know, it's great to have something like this. But I think some of the things that would be wonderful is to also tie in with some of the community service groups that have, at times, reached in to try and help out. I know that Rotary at times has tried to help with voter registration. I know the Marlboro Junior Women's Club also has worked, like, with the guidance counselors a number of years ago, working with Sharon Buckley, had come in to try and get voter registrations improved within the high school. And I think to your point, it's trying to help kids learn about it so they can then become more engaged, because many, many students just don't know it until it's kind of put right there in front of them. But I think through a number of our community groups, it might be another support to look at assisting with civics programs, so.
I think if they learn about local government, you won't have to have
Agreed.
registration drives. They'll register on their own if they know the importance of it. So rather than put that out front, I'd rather have them learn about local government, so.
I have one more question.
Ms. Bolandja.
Thank you. Mr. Reyes?
Yes.
I thought that the first semester of U.S. History was also a civics course. Is that not accurate?
That, that used to be the case. And then when, when the new frameworks were adopted, we decided to revert back to the U.S. one, U.S. two model.
Okay, okay. Thank you for this explanation and this update. I really appreciate it. And anything that we can do to be supportive of, you know, kind of harkening back to the days of Mrs. Weldon, when we all enjoyed going in and teaching her class about, you know, why we were running and all that kind of stuff was great. I'll also point out, if you don't already know it, that one of the city councillors, Samantha Pearlman, is very active in this as her day job in working with young people around voting. And so I think, or just civics in general, not just voting, yeah. So we have a lot of resources here in the community. And obviously, City Hall is open to the challenge as well, so I think it's great. And the program that Maureen Gruelick did down there was actually geared for adults. It wasn't for students.
Yeah, no, they actually get a certificate and.
Yeah, so I think, you know, we can, as a community, really, maybe shadow what they're doing in the schools and open this up to a community-wide civics lesson.
And, and, um, we definitely will tap into your, um, your expertise. And, uh, I did, I did have a conversation with Ms. Pearlman or Councilwoman Pearlman. Um, I think it was, uh, two summers ago, um, to, to discuss how, uh, we, how we can get students more engaged. So, um, we would definitely plan to tap into the community's expertise. Uh, I think that's the spirit of the new law, um, and probably more so once, um, once the pandemic is over.
Understood.
Any other questions? Mr. Crusoe?
Mr. Reyes, I'm just trying to figure out how this works now. Is this a yearly project? They're supposed to do it every year?
Um, so, so, uh, the, the way the law is worded, um, yes. So if effectively, all grade eight students will have to, will have to, uh, sorry, I take that back. Um, the school has to provide all eighth graders the opportunity to participate in such a project, uh, as well as, uh, all high school students at the designated year. So the school, the school designates, um, at what grade this project will take place at the high school level.
Because you have two years at the high school, nine and 10, that's listed under what you-
Um, and so that, like, the, those are the two avenues we're exploring for this year. So the minimum is one at the high school. Um, so there's no, there's no, um, there's no cap. So it doesn't say only one. Um, and these, so we're, we're kind of, uh, if you will, floating two trial balloons, um, to see where potentially it might work best.
So the, the idea is to have every student do something at least once in their high school career?
Yes, that's, that's the idea.
Um, I'm just, also, it appears as if also the project sort of takes over the rest of the curriculum at some point? Is that being designed in such a way that it's still integrating whatever else is going on normally in the curriculum?
Um, yes, so the, the state, um, the state provides districts with a lot of flexibility as to how they might approach this. So, um, they can treat it as one unit. Um, they can treat it as something that students work on little by little throughout the year. Um, and, and so depending, so every district, I guess, is making the decision where it best fits and where it makes the most sense. Um, because of, because, um, because of the nature of the year, uh, the way we approached it was to try to look at existing opportunities. Um, and I know that other districts are treating it differently. Um, so some are doing it, let's say at the junior year, for instance, as a kind of, um, capstone project.
Now, at some point in time, does this project have to get some approval from the state? Or is it just, they're leaving it up to you to, um?
Uh, no, um, it, the, the state isn't going to be approving it. So this is, this is a district-level thing.
So there are no, there are no state benchmarks? I mean, you're, we're setting our own benchmarks for whether it's successful or not?
Now we're in trouble.
Um, pretty much, yes. So the state, the, the state has provided, I guess, um, a definition of what a high-quality student-led, nonpartisan civics project is. Um, they, they've created what I consider a pretty robust guidebook, um, that's on their website. Um, but, uh, there, there isn't accountability the way, um, the way there is with MCAS. So they're, they're not, they're not, now, I guess the, the quote-unquote accountability, um, will come when, uh, we start showcasing these to the public, uh, and when the Commonwealth Civics Challenge, um, goes live in '22, '23.
That will be a must, and I thought that was a possible, the way you described it at first, I thought it was a voluntary participation, but evidently it's not.
Oh, I, I, well, yes, it is, it is voluntary. At least that's my understanding. Um, I, I guess I'm, I'm using the word accountability pretty loosely. When, when, um, when you showcase something to the community, um, that creates its own, um, I guess, small A accountability.
I, the bottom line is, I guess I should get the bottom line. The state hasn't, it, no one, no one's standing at the finish line with a clipboard and check marking things off from the state. I guess that's my, my bottom line. And if that's what they're not doing, then thank goodness for that. First time in my career, but anyway.
No, but yeah.
Well, yeah, obviously that, but I mean, yeah.
There is, so the, if you look at one of the slides, um, there, there's a little note there. Um, so the, the clipboard, if you will, that the state will be using for this is the SIMS reporting. So there's a new field that was added, uh, that was added this, uh, summer. Um, and it base, it, it's basically did the student complete the project or not?
Okay.
Um, but it's, it's not a competency determination requirement. It's not a student requirement. The state is just collecting data.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none. Thank you, Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Mr. Diaz?
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. This is tonight's update from Finance and Operations. Food Services, with the students returning to the hybrid model on January 19th, the district will again be utilizing our buses to transport students. Because of this, we'll be making some changes to the remote meals distribution program that currently exists. Um, by utilizing data gathered over the past few months, thanks to the work of Steve Phelan and our bus drivers, we have created eight routes servicing eighty stops throughout the city of Boston. The routes and stops were chosen based on the most subscribed drop-off locations over the past few months. While this is indeed fewer stops than our existing program, the eighty stops represent a five-fold increase over the remote meals program that we started the school year with. The district's goal has been and will continue to be serving the greatest number of families possible. The new routes are ready, um, and they'll be shared with families via buses as well as emails, uh, this week. Students attending school in person will continue to receive breakfast at the end of their school day for consumption at home the next morning. As always, uh, we appreciate the continued participation of our students in both the remote and in-person food service program. FY '22 budget schedule extension. As Superintendent Bregger mentioned earlier, uh, we are, the, the work is ongoing on the district's FY '22 budget. Due to the many fiscal unknowns at the moment, um, including the lack of a timeline and funding projections for the state's FY '22 budget, as well as, uh, information on incoming fiscal stimulus from the federal government, we are requesting a thirty-day extension to the approved budget schedule. Um, the new budget schedule that we're requesting would have the budget coming to the committee on March 9th. On March 24th, we will hold our workshop. That's, uh, also a Wednesday. On the 13th, the committee would agree on a budget number for the public hearing posting. On the 27th, we would have the public hearing and the committee would vote in the regular session. And then on May 1st, which is exactly thirty days after the proposed schedule, uh, we would send the budget over to the mayor and the city council. This is here tonight for your comments, and if you don't object, I'll bring there is an action item for the, for the next meeting.
Any questions from the committee? Seeing none. Thank you, Mr. Diaz. Acceptance of the minutes of the November 24th School Committee Meeting.
Motion to accept.
Motion made and seconded to accept. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor? Opposed? Carries. And acceptance of the minutes of the December 8th School Committee Meeting.
Motion to accept.
Motion made and seconded to accept. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor? Opposed? That carries. Okay, public participation.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I have, uh, just want to read off the phone number and conference ID for public participation. So anyone who would wish to dial into the meeting and provide a public comment to the committee can do so by dialing 774-243-0611. Conference ID 696951468 pound. Again, that phone number is 774-243-0611. Conference ID 696951468 pound. And Madam Chair, I do have two, uh, comments that were submitted before the meeting, uh, for me to read. If, if you don't mind if I take those up first?
Please do.
Uh, the first one is from Ms. Julia Marshall. It says, "Hi, everyone. I figured it'd be better to formally, formally begin discussing February and April breaks sooner rather than later, as many parents and members of the community I interact with have brought it up in conversation. I've been thinking about the upcoming breaks, especially in February, a lot recently. I work with students in many different capacities. And a few parents, community members I know have wondered whether or not to, that two breaks would be canceled so school could end early, or if they would continue as planned. I would like to present an alternative option for the committee to discuss whenever is appropriate. My suggestion is to consolidate those two breaks into one week in March. I did not create this idea myself. Numerous parents have offered this as a preferable alternative. I know various factors such as time off for our hard-working educators and potential MCAS testing must be configured into these decisions, but I still want to present this to the committee. Thank you for listening to the suggestions, and you're all doing a wonderful job during these unprecedented and overwhelming times." And that was the public comment from Ms. Julia Marshall.
Did by any chance she give her address for the record?
No, but I will have to send it back out, so I apologize.
That's okay, I'll- It's okay. We know where she lives.
Okay. Um, I had a, uh, another comment that was emailed to me, um, for me to read into the record, if, if you don't mind. "We would like to submit this letter for consideration in the public debate about when to restart in-person or hybrid learning. While we are very supportive of the hybrid model and find it to be the best choice for our kids as it balances COVID concerns with social-emotional needs, we feel that January 19th is not the date to begin hybrid learning again. The numbers are still too high. Boston Globe reported yesterday that the post-holiday surge is real and very much a concern for our public health." And following that was the link to the article from the Globe. "Right now, it's a risk equation that dictates our move towards safety. The rate of infection in Marlboro in particular is too high to promote reopening school, especially knowing students may be asymptomatic carriers. Once a teacher is exposed and is required to quarantine, the in-person dynamic is lost anyway, and a teacher is put into grave danger. This is also a time of compounded high stress, given the threats of violence before the inauguration at all fifty state capitals." After that is a link to a New York Times story. "We hope you will agree to reconvene in-person once COVID numbers are a lower percentage. We believe in all the safety measures a school has put in place for in-person learning, and we want to give them a fighting chance to succeed. Thank you for your consideration," and that is from Ben and Stacy Resnikoff. Those are the two public comments that I had. Mr. Chair, Mr. Mayor.
Any other comments? Any other public participation?
We do have one line on the lobby. Allow the line in.
Please state your name and address for the record.
Thank you for calling into the School Committee Meeting for a public comment. Can you please state your name and your address for the record, please? Thank you.
Phone number ending with 3253. Please press star six, state your name and address for the record, please.
The, uh, phone number that has ended in three, uh, is it 3523, Doug?
3253.
3253. If you could please hit star six to unmute your mic, and if you don't mind providing us your name and address for the public comment section. All right, uh, looks like we're having some technical difficulties there. Um, I didn't have any other messages, Mr. Mayor. I, I read the two that I had into the record.
Thank you very much. Seeing no other public participation, action items. FY '21 operating budget transfers.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a few transfers for the committee's consideration tonight, with door by school. At Good Nice, Good Now School, we're requesting a $2,000 transfer utilizing efficiencies in the behavior tech line to offset overage in the kindergarten teacher line due to a lane change. At Jarek, requesting a transfer of $8,560, utilizing efficiencies in the ten-month clerk line to offset overages in the custodian overtime and adjustment counselor line. Over at Kane, requesting a transfer of $2,320, utilizing efficiencies in the paraprofessional line to offset lane change retroactive payments for two teachers, as well as overages in the charge custodian account. At Richard, requesting a transfer of $17,851, utilizing the Richard reading teacher line efficiencies. This was due to us receiving more Title I funds than I had budgeted for, which is a good thing, uh, to cover retro payments due to a lane change, as well as overages due to an additional pair needed and overage in the nurse line. At Whitcomb, utilizing, uh, requesting a transfer of $19,700, utilizing the Ri, the Richard reading teacher line, uh, again, due to a Title I offset, to cover overages due to a long-term tech teacher substitute, overages due to the Title I offset reconciliation in the Whitcomb reading teacher line, as well as overages in the twelve-month clerk lines. At the high school, requesting a transfer of $134,650, utilizing savings from the hall monitor lines, offset overages in ELA and history due to long-term subs, music due to lane changes, and guidance due to a smaller FY '21 grant, uh, offset than we had anticipated. Offsetting overages in the behavior tech line due to additional BT support needed. We're also utilizing savings from the business teacher line to support the Metas program at the high school for FY '21.
Motion to approve transfers as presented.
Motion made and seconded to approve as presented. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor? Opposed? Carries?
Thank you.
Uh, policy, 8.120 student records.
Um, thank you very much. Uh, so I'd like to ask for a suspension of the rules. So instead of us doing our normal process of, um, having a first read and then the following meeting moving forward on a vote, um, I'd ask for a suspension of the rules so that we might be able to vote on this tonight. Um, this was the student record policy that the superintendent had, um, mentioned at our last me, or not our, yeah, our last meeting that we had as a special meeting on, um, January 4th. So if I could ask for that suspension, and then I would make a further motion.
There's been a request to suspend the rules. It's been seconded. Any discussion on the suspension? All those in favor? Opposed? Carries?
Um, thank you very much. So I'd like to make a motion, uh, for the, um, student records policy, policy 8.120 with the, um, minor change that was suggested by our attorney to meet the needs so that we might make, um, information available appropriately for the Board of Health specifically. But this does allow you to, uh, make the records available should that be needed, um, relative to pandemic information.
Additionally, this would, this is in specific to the fact that we were, uh, selected and approved to be able to perform the binax testing, um, which what we need to do is send out the parents, um, through a third party, a ability to sign off on the consent and waiver forms. And additionally, beyond that, they also have to agree and consent that we can then share the information, the result, with our local Board of Health. So the, when we went through this, we did ask our student services attorney to look at this policy to make sure that by us, uh, sending information to a third party for the consent, that we were not violating our own policy.
Any qu, questions on it? Mr. Crusoe?
Just a quick one. I know this went to the, through our legal people, so I probably should just accept this without asking. But this doesn't require us, this isn't a free of information type of thing. Not just anybody can come in and say, "I want this information."
Not to the best of my understanding, and I would say, I'll, I'll ask that for the superintendent since he was having, um, conversations with the attorneys. But I would find that highly doubtful that our attorneys would necessarily allow that. But I appreciate where the questions come from.
Yeah, I just, I just, this was an issue that came up so many years ago, when I was on the School Committee, so many years ago, that we had somebody using this information. They didn't actually get it from the school department. We found it later, but it was a, it should come up then. I just remember that when I- I just remember that when I spread this out.
Mr. Crusoe, one thing is, there is case law on student directory information. I would be lying if I told you that I was an expert on it, but there are some things that are public record, such as our employees' names, like all those types of things. When it comes to student data, that is more protected in some ways than the other data that we have. But I would be lying to you if I told you I was an expert on student directories. I know there are some things that are public, but there are many things that are not.
Did you make a motion?
I thought I did, but I will formally make a motion to approve the policy as it's amended.
Motion made. Seconded to approve. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All in favor? Opposed, carries. Thank you. Accepted the donations and gifts. New York Life, Kane School, $500.
Motion to accept.
Motion made. Seconded to accept. All those in favor? Opposed, carries. Mastassi, FY21, 274, Idea Program Improvement Special Education Grant.
Motion to accept.
We'll take them both. How's that?
Sorry. Okay.
Mastassi, FY21, 298, Early Childhood Special Education Grant for $4,501.
Motion to approve.
Motion made. Seconded to approve both of those. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor? Opposed, carries. And reports of committees? No reports. Members forum. Here you go, Mrs. Hennessy.
Okay, so, just was hoping that we could have a discussion relative to the return to school that was proposed for potentially January 19th. I personally am still quite concerned with that concept of having folks come back into school right now. I wholly support the hybrid learning process. I think things that have been rolling around in my mind that is more concerning is more relative to the high school situation and even at Whitcomb, more from a standpoint that they are not in singular classrooms. There's more motion and opportunity for contact with a lot more folks, just by the nature of what's going on, by needing to be in the classes and multiple classes. And I've definitely been struggling with this, so I'm not going to prolong it other than to say that I, I'm not sure, I'm feeling that the 19th is where I'm feeling comfortable with right now, and I'm hoping that maybe we can look at potentially moving out the opportunity of the date further, recognizing that the BA, we need to keep it even as we would move it out. So that's my initial thought.
Before I ask for any other members, could I ask the superintendent to give us a few thoughts before?
Sure. I think we've all received similar communications on where we are right now. It is a difficult issue, and I think the realistic view of what school's going to look like, I can give you. I think I can tell you exactly what it's going to look like if we come back on the 19th. I can guarantee you that we are going to quarantine classrooms. There are going to be cases, we're going to quarantine classrooms. At the elementary levels, it's easier sometimes to quarantine classrooms because they're mostly self-contained, as in it's generally the class and the teacher together. At the secondary level, it generally affects more people and it's a team effort. So when you look at that, there's going to be a probably more likelihood that we're going to have to take some breaks, and there might have to be even some grade-level breaks during this winter time if we are hybrid. I think that's a realistic view of what school will look like if we are in school starting the 19th. I think looking at the data that we have currently, although we have less classrooms quarantined now than as we were at the same time in December, I think what we're seeing is cases are starting to increase, and the highest number of cases in the city right now is with school-aged children. That's the area where there is the most cases. So I think the fear is that with the number of asymptomatic cases, that there is a potential for spread. We haven't seen widespread COVID transmission in schools. There have been very select cases where we have been able to point out and say, there has, there's definitely seems to be a spread here because there's no other real opportunity. That leads us to look at our own protocols, our own policies and procedures, and make changes, and we've done so. So I think with the conservative guidelines we've been using with quarantining, we haven't seen that transmission. However, it is sometimes frustrating to be in school and then be quarantined and then have to be out of school, and it is a bit of a disruption to the schedule, to students, and to families who are trying to rely upon some normalcy there. That is going to be the reality of what we're dealing with for a while. I would love to tell you that we're going to have vaccines in early February. I don't know. I don't. I don't. So I think realistically, the policies and the procedures we're using right now are going to be in place for at least the next couple of months while we're trying to kind of move through this period of time. So I think for me, I always support the kids being in school. I think it's, I think everyone does. The realistic point of view is it's going to be difficult. There's going, I may then come to you after the fact and say, "School committee, I do have to let you know, I'm going to recommend that for right now, we're going to shut down grade seven. I don't have enough people to do grade seven." That's a likely scenario, and I think you've all seen that in other school districts that are still trying to perform some hybrid in-person learning. So now that we know that that's the scenario, I think the question becomes, do we try to go for normalcy and continue with what we've been doing, or do we try to bring the kids back, get FaceTime with their teachers, FaceTime in schools, knowing that there's going to be more quarantining than we did in the fall? And I think that's the realistic point of view. I mean, I struggle with it. I would recommend that we do bring kids back, but I'm going to be back here in front of you telling you that we're quarantining a lot of classrooms. That's the reality of what we're dealing with right now. So thank you, Mayor, for allowing me to speak.
Mr. Go ahead, Mr.
Thank you. I have two questions for you. One is, were you on a call today regarding the pool testing?
Ms. O'Brien and Ms. Murphy were, so that, while that is a good thing, we've already signed up for that, to be able to use that service, and we do believe there's some federal money coming down the line that can assist us to maintain it after the, I don't want to call it the trial period, but I don't know what else to call it. Initial period. So I think that that's a possibility for us, but I also don't see that ramping up in the next two weeks.
That's what I was going to ask, like what would the timeframe be?
I think it's a little bit later. And I think the same things we have to do before we got binax ready for us to be able to do that. We're going to need parental permission. We're going to need the permission to share results with Board of Health. And then with pool testing, just so the public is aware, what would happen is either 10 or 25 people would take a swab, they'd run it around their nose, and they'd all put it in the same vial. That file would be tested as a pool, and if there's any positive within that pool, we would be notified. Then we still have to do testing after the fact to determine it. So it'll give you a much more accurate depiction of where the virus is in the school community because you can test so many people at once. I don't, that's not going to be like the next two weeks. I don't think we're there.
Okay. And the other, I know I posed this to you earlier on the phone, but just for everyone's edification, I'm just curious, particularly at the high school, when, where, what's going on when teachers are not able to be there, but a class has not, the whole class hasn't been quarantined? So do we have enough subs? What are students doing? I heard anecdotally that, oh, Mr. Riley's there, that, I saw you, Mr. Riley, that students are going to the library, and that's fine for a class, but it's not okay for five classes. So I just want to, because it's only going to get worse, as you said. And at the high school in particular, because it's not a closed community, you've got one kid in there in five different classes with how many teachers? I do not, can't even fathom how you contain that.
Yeah, we're absolutely struggling with the getting subs. In-person subs right now is difficult. We've actually had more luck getting virtual subs to cover the remote learning. But getting the in-person subs has been a struggle that we've had for some time now. We've also, a lot of the subs we have had, we've actually turned them into employees. So we've brought them on to different support staff functions and/or teaching positions, one-year teaching positions to support remote learning. So we had some success getting some good folks, and they were really good, and we hired them full-time. So we haven't been able to backfill too many of those positions. We have had times where we have had to use larger spaces, like a library, and spread kids out because we do not have, you know, a classroom for them to go into at that time. That's not what we want to do. That really isn't. But at that time, if I don't have any adults to cover that classroom, I really don't have any other option for them to do that.
Thank you.
Mr. Matthews.
So I've been struggling with this for a couple of weeks. Obviously, we had our meeting last week and the last couple of days as well. And I look back at some of the comments that I made earlier in the year and the ping-ponging, and that, to me, is what I find as a parent would drive me more crazy than anything else, is my child goes in, and because they're in a classroom, they have to be quarantined, and then they're home again for two weeks, and then they get, maybe get the chance to go back, and then they're back, and I think that would drive me more crazy than anything else. And rather than having to find a solution to making sure that they can be at home, I mean, Allison talked about she's in a position where she can be at home. We, I don't know, we can't pick and choose which children have the opportunity. I know that some children have opted to stay remote when we gave that additional, or the parents have chosen for them to stay remote, but that's not the only impact that it has, just the kids and their parents, it's our staff. I'm very uncomfortable with this return right now. I, and if I had to throw a date out, going back to the cohorts and keeping them equal, I don't want to say two weeks, I think two weeks is too soon again. And I will say that I talked to Mrs. Hennessy earlier today, and we were looking at the calendar, and realistically, because even though I think it's a lovely idea to think that maybe we could eliminate two vacations and have one, because nobody should have anywhere to go, people are going to go places and do things, and this is why we're in the predicament we're in. The soonest I would feel comfortable, and also feel a little more comfortable, the hopes of the vaccine, being able to get into our staff in the month of February, we're at March 8th in order to have equal A and B again. I, I see Mrs. Berry over there like, it's up to you, Mr. Mayor. I, I'm...
So I get to make the decision?
No, 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 to allow her to talk, no, to allow her to speak.
If Ms. Berry can speak.
If she can speak. I'm not saying that much to you. I'm saying, there's not a lot of difficult decisions we've had to make over the years. This is a tough one.
I think the biggest issue we have is, there's really no, you know, there's no right or wrong. You do make the best decision you can with the information you have. The numbers aren't going to get better anytime in the near future. Kids are going to be together more than they have been, and according to most of the doctors, they should be. That's just the way it is. That's a long ways out. That's just a long ways out. And it's going to be a while before we, you know, get all the teachers, vaccines to all the teachers. You know, obviously, we need to start with the teachers that have students in the classroom, that are seeing face-to-face students every day. You know, at this point, we've had the health departments immunized, but this group is the easy group, the first responders. The next group is huge, is huge. And I mean, that phase is broken down, but it's a big, big undertaking coming up with the next round. And so I can't give you a date, and are they going to be satisfied with one, the first shot, or are people going to be more comfortable with the second shot, which means we're talking Fourth of July, but... Ms. Hennessy?
So, you know, to your point, there's no easy answer on any of it, and I guess, you know, I really was kind of rolling around in my head, Ms. Berry's comment at our last meeting on the Fourth, talking about, were there some potential options of potentially bringing back some groupings of students? And obviously, that would need to be kept in line with the A, B cohort situation, because when that was created, which is, you know, 100% correct, is that we need to be thinking about the kids throughout the school system who may need to help care for younger siblings at home and that kind of coverage situation. But I did wonder if it might be something where bringing back potentially the students in some of the younger classrooms where there is more of a single exposure, if you will, if that might help to break it out some, where that might be able to have a grouping come in where there's more one classroom at a time kind of thing in that age group. Obviously, that's not necessarily going to be a most popular solution for everyone, but I think we're all somewhat struggling with wanting to give that opportunity of being able to be in school, but also being realistic to the nature of the movement of our students and our staff throughout the program as well. And yes, I could have just created a nightmare by throwing that idea out there, but talking about the eighth does create such a, another scary situation of thinking, oh my goodness, we're really having to discuss moving it that far out because of the nature of the vacation, and also noting that unfortunately, we are seeing numbers increase after time off, if you will, even though we really shouldn't be traveling anywhere. So I just wonder if we may take at minimum a stall on the 19th and look at other opportunities to start to bring back some of the classrooms, grade levels, in some form of a staggering situation to allow for hopefully a easier reentry with not as much of a ping-pong situation. So I'm sorry to throw the bomb out there, but...
Ms. Berry?
I will be quick, and I thank you for letting me speak. I've been asked since January 5th if this discussion was going to happen again, so I do appreciate it coming up again because there is a large concern about coming back on the 19th. I'm here representing all the teachers, so I just want to also just put out there the pre-K through two teachers and special ed teachers and EL teachers that have been in school, and there are classes that are on their second, third time quarantining, so I do just feel it's important to also include them in this discussion, and also, especially at this time, because of, they, yes, they are self-contained, but they also have the older siblings... but they also have the older siblings within the, the same school system. And I, they've been in, in front of kids this whole time. And I, and I, they still need to be part of the discussion as to whether or not they should remain in school also with the rest of us possibly remaining remote. So, I just wanted to say that. So, thank you.
Thank you. Other comments? Ms. Ryan?
Well, I guess I should put my two cents in. I, I mean, I pretty much echo everybody's comments that have been made tonight. It's, it's truly one of the hardest decisions I feel like I've had to face as a school committee member in the, for the last seven years. Speaking from my own experience with my own three remote learners right currently, it's very difficult. They want to be in school and they're struggling being at home. And it's not because of any effort from the teachers. The teachers have been fabulous and they're working with the students. And, I mean, I'm sure my experience is similar to many parents are facing right now. And it's just really difficult. And I think when we made the decision last week, at least from my perspective, I was hoping to see the numbers decline and they don't seem to be moving much. And it's just a tough decision. I don't know what else to do at this point.
Mr. Superintendent? So, to, to piggyback on the bomb, 'cause I'll light it. She threw it. I'll light it. Can we bring the third grade back and keep the distance between them if they all came back?
If all of the third graders at once came back?
Yeah. Like we're doing for kindergarten, first and second.
That, that would restrict our ability to have fourth and fifth graders in the building at any point. Because what, what we did is with first and second grade, they're taking up more classrooms than they normally would have. Generally, in the bigger schools, they're taking up eight to nine classrooms as opposed to the traditional five or possibly six. So, what would happen is if you did that with third grade as well, there really isn't any room for any of the kids in the building after that.
Yeah, but we, I'm saying just the third grade. Can we get the third grader in full-time in the buildings today?
I'd have to look at it. I, I honestly, I, we're looking at probably seven to eight classrooms across the board for first and second grade. And then third grade would probably be eight, eight classrooms at some of the schools. So, it's, it's gonna be tight because we have other programs running at the same time.
Other?
Plus, we don't have the teachers to be able to do that.
Oh, we have the teachers 'cause they're teaching the kids now. So, if we brought them back.
No, because when they're online, there's more of them.
All right. What, any other comments? I do think a date is important. I'm not looking to say next week. March 8th is out there. I'd like to, if we, if we just kept on the regular school committee's schedule, which means our next meeting is, I had it. Now, I don't have it.
January 26th, Mr. Mayor?
26th. What if we went with no sooner than February 1st? And just left it at that? So, the 26th, we discuss it again. That gives one week leeway to get everything back in check. But if we say no sooner than February 1st, it's an additional two weeks. But I, I just, do I think the world's gonna change in the next two weeks? No, but I just have real trouble going out seven weeks, eight weeks.
Well, and the, oh, I, Mr. Mayor, the reason I suggested it is 'cause then that brings you two weeks before you're on a vacation.
Yeah. No, I understand. And then we have the, you know, everyone screwing around on vacation. I, I get it, you know?
So, it,
That's why I put January 11th and the 1st.
Yeah, I know.
So, going with that theory, it is a potential that we could get a B cohort and an A cohort one week before vacation and then they won't be back till March.
I just don't wanna, I don't wanna be too optimistic, but I do wanna plan a little bit.
No, but I'm just saying, like, that's the reality of it. I mean, there would, if they came in February 1st, that would, I'm, right. February 1st, that would be the B cohort for one week, then the A cohort for the next week, and then it's vacation. Correct?
Yeah, correct.
This is the first time, I'm happy, that Mrs. Ryan has a mask on 'cause she's making faces like,
Trying to read her eyes.
She's making all kinds of faces under there. But I, I just, I, I don't, I don't wanna go out too far. But I don't also wanna say, okay, February 1st, that's the date. That's why I'm saying no sooner than February 1st. We'll discuss it on the 26th. We'll see how the next two weeks go. I don't anticipate things are gonna change. What will change, though, is we might have a clearer track to the vaccines. You know, we're winging it the first couple of weeks. As much as you read all the garbage in the paper, I think they've been doing a pretty good job in distributing them out. There's more in the city than we expected. So, there's a plan for all the assisted living facilities to be done before the end of January. So, it, it's getting out there. There are 40,000 vaccines in a stock, in a stockpile somewhere? I don't know. We'll take them if they are, 'cause I'll get them in people's arms in 30 days if they send them our way. But at least it gives, at, at least it's something, it's saying that we can plan at least for another two weeks for parents because that's really, you know, to be blunt, it sucks.
It does. It does. Can I, can I add a, a point? I, I agree that having the vaccine and getting the teachers vaccinated is a, is a big part of the puzzle. But the kids don't get vaccinated and the kids,
There's no kids getting vaccinated.
Right. So, bringing them back, it definitely helps, you know, with the concerns that we have with spread with teachers, no doubt. But that doesn't, it's not a panacea. And there's still gonna be the potential for strep, spread amongst the students.
Go for it.
Go for it. And, and we would not venture into Ms. Julia Marshall's lovely idea that actually some other schools have looked at. Like many colleges had faced that unfortunate decision about ridding themselves of spring break to help to eliminate the opportunity of people traveling and not doing wise decisions. I, I'm saying that almost out loud because, because we are in such a uncharted kind of situation and I know this is a challenge. And yes, people need a break. But I also am concerned about that break because we, we see when people have a break that there is that portion of population which does not follow the rules as best as possible. So, I have to throw it out there for at least running around the room and thought.
Through the, through the chair. Can we even do that?
I, I would, I would ask that,
Impact bargaining?
I would ask that if, if the committee would like us to consider that, I'd like to be able to take that back and, and speak to the negotiations team. I, I would like to get some opinions on that from the faculty about what that would look like for them. And before we, before we would move forward on something like that. But I, I appreciate the question from, from Julia. And it's, it's something that I've had a little bit of folks come, you know, here and there, maybe one or two questions over the year, but nothing, no title wave of questions. But, you know, one or two folks have pointed out to me, what if we eliminated some of these breaks and went straight through? I, I would just say that some folks are already looking to that break for the needed time away from the screen, so.
Mr. Gary?
Just my two cents for that particular subject. I, I don't, I don't have an issue with having discussions about possibly going to one break instead of two or, or eliminating whichever as a means to get us through the school year. But I don't think we should look at it as a means to control what families do or don't do. I don't think that's our place. I also don't think it's gonna solve it. If people are gonna go away, they're gonna go away, whether we are in school or not. I just think we're, we would be fooling ourselves to, to say that if we cut out February vacation, then nobody will go away. But if we need it for the time, because if, you know, we're behind the X amount of days, that makes sense. And if it's through the discussions, you know, bargaining with them, if that, it works out, that's a different story. I just don't wanna have, you know, us fool ourselves. We don't have control over what people do.
Crusoe?
I kind of agree with Mr. Gary. I think the other problem with that is that if the kids, whether they're, the families are taking away, they just, or they just decide not to come to school that week, whatever, if they're not there, and we're calling it a school week and they miss whatever they miss, then some kids that are already losing time and are far behind are gonna get further behind. And that kind of worries me too, if you suddenly start taking this, well, it's a month away now, which for a lot of families who shouldn't be planning on vacations, but who have, who've already paid money for something, they're certainly not gonna, they're gonna go. And, you know, and I don't think we, making up that time with the kids is hard enough when it isn't a pandemic running around. I, I just don't think it's gonna be feasible to assume that we're gonna get every, it's, it's gonna cause as much problems, I think, as it's gonna solve. And speaking as a teacher, I would have, that, that idea did get floated where I worked many times. I was the first one saying, no, 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 no. But I don't know how, maybe the mom budget is different than I am. But yeah, I think you look at what's going on right now, what do we hear from the teachers, the stress they hear? I think a lot of them would probably be maximally stressed out if we didn't give them some break coming up into here. Going back to the issue of wanting to bring the kids back, I fully came in here tonight, to be honest with you, expecting at least we were gonna keep them on another two weeks. I just assumed that was gonna happen. Going out to the 8th was not something that was in my head. But now I get, I understand with, with the vacation there. But I think,
I don't mind.
Yeah. I think the mayor has what I, what I would go with right now. I think the two-week increments has given us time to, you know, to think. It's, it's easier to look, look ahead than look behind. And I think if we're looking, it gives us, well, it gives us 10 days. It's not like it's 14 days, but it's 10 days to look ahead. And at a certain point, if we get to that point in March and we realize, when we get to that point, I'm sorry, in, in two weeks from now, on the 26th, when we're looking at this, and we get to that point, we realize this is a zero-sum game we're still playing, then maybe we should look at the longer term. But I think at least one more time, we should give the two-week look at. That's the way I would vote tonight.
Any other comments? Entain a motion.
I'll move to delay the opening for two weeks. Sorry, with the, sorry, potential return for February 1st, but to revisit this in our meeting in two weeks.
26th.
So, we're gonna revisit it at our next regularly scheduled meeting. We won't be returning before February 1st. And we will continue as we currently have with the students that are currently going. Any further discussion? Seeing none. On the motion. All those in favor? Opposed? Carries. Thank you very much.
I have read the warrant and I've reviewed it and we'll sign it and motion to adjourn unless there's anything.
Motion made and seconded to adjourn. All those in favor? Opposed? Carries. Thank you all very, very much. Stay safe.